Um. I'm going to record again. Um. Okay, for people who are not here earlier, I asked for permission to record this session, so. Please permit me to record the session and we will continue from. Where we start. Okay, I'm sharing my screen. Thanks. Um. I was asking, so can someone please tell me what. Um. Disaster recovery is and what makes it different from a business continuity plan or do you think they're the same thing? We have in Manila's hand up, so you can please unmute and give us an answer. Thank you.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um. I think I. I don't think that they are the same, but I think that a business continuity plan cannot work without. Having a disaster recovery in place because. Um. The whole, like, both of them have a common goal, which is to ensure, like, the business keeps going on even after a disaster has occurred. Like, so a disaster recovery recovery plan such as works on salvaging, like, um. Technological equipment that are left, documents and all that, just. Another plan to make to make sure that, like, the promise or the importance of the business continues to run, even while, like, businesses. Sort of recuperating or recovering from a disaster. So I think that they work, Harry Passu, or you can say they work. In comparison with one another, but I mean, someone can also disagree with that, but I think that it is, I think that a business continuity plan cannot. Exist without a disaster recovery plan. That's how I feel. That's just the feeling. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. That was a very. Um. Excellent answer, but would like to hear from someone else. You know, do you agree? Do you disagree? Um. Do you have any inputs? To that? And we can take. Your suggestion. So Nika says a. Business continuity is immediate goal, but disaster recovery is long-term goal. That is correct. Anyone else? So you're. Do you have comments? I mean, you don't. Um. For example, um, over your mind, you may not have studied it, but what do you think? Um. These are from what it sounds like. It's okay, we're here to learn, so.
Okay, let me give you the try. Hello?
Um. I can hear you, you can go on.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay. So I think disaster recovery. Has to do with, um. When, when that thing happens, when that thing we. Had planned for not like you said, when you were talking about the B C P. Talked about the risks, identifying the risk in a particular probably operations, what can go wrong? And then. So the disaster recovery now comes into play. When, um. When it happens, how do? Or how do we come back quickly? You know, so maybe if it's for operations. So how do we start operations again in the fastest possible time? I don't know, but that's what it sounds like to me.
Yeah, okay, so, um, you're going in line with what Emanuela said, um, you know, you can have a. Business continuity plan if you don't have a uh a disaster recovery plan. They go hand in hand. And if you're looking at this two concept, most companies might have one. Document, have a business continuity plan. Or disaster recovery plan and then have the business continuity plan inside of disaster recovery plan. So it's just one document instead of having. Two documents separately, but then they all define the processes. The steps, immediate steps that we would take to recover from an incident. So, um. Over your muscle from today, please, that being where you said that and refer to it as an event or an incident. So this way we're building our. Our terminologies. So it's it it could be an event or incident, okay? Um. That's very good. You answered correctly. Um. So let me give my own intuitive yes, we've said everything. Um. So. From my notes, I said, I said, um, the purpose of a disaster recovery details how a company would prepare for disaster. And the steps it would take to recover from a disaster. This plan must include. Many possible scenarios, stolen laptop, terrorist attacks. Roles must be assigned and rehearsed. So, um, you don't, you don't rehearse your business continuity plan when you discuss it. You have a management review sessions. Do they agree? Do they not agree? Um. Okay, they make management supports your business continuity plan. They make available resources to make it happen. Also, same as a disaster recovery, or you you test your disaster recovery plan. I'll give you an example again, going back to. Um. An organization, let's say. They process a lot of documents. Let me use an immigration service, for example. You you apply for, you know, a visa, you have so many users from various. Um. Countries, states, using a platform to apply for a visa, it's only documents. And obviously, this website is going to be targets to cyber criminals because they can steal personal data. It can cause um a denial of service attack, bringing the website down. In by doing so, operation is halted. You see the company or the M D O C are running around, oh, what we can't process application, we can't take payments, all is going on, our website is down, are we under attack? So as an organization, looking at your disaster recovery plan, you would detail this scenario that I have mentioned. And while doing that, you ask yourself, okay, what's um what solution do I have in place to protect? Me from such an attack. And then I don't know if you've come across the concept of a W A F, a web application firewall. Which you can have in place to detect maybe bot scans or, you know. A numerous number of traffic from a certain I P that is just sending a lot of things and causing other people. Not to be able to access your website. So you need such solution in place. And then you can, you begin to ask yourself, okay. Um. Now that we have this work in place, do we have anyone who's going to monitor it? Is it going to be sending logs somewhere? And then you need to test this plan so you can. Set up a tabletop scenario or, you know, you can set up a lab with a security team if you have one. And then get them, get someone who is on the hacker end to send malicious traffic to your website and see how it performs. How long is it going to be down for? You're going to account for this in your. Uh. Business continuity plan. And your disaster recovery plan, how long can we have our website down for and how can we quickly recover? So what is my security team going to do? To restore back my website immediately. Then you begin to think of backups. Do we have backups? Um. Are we able to spin up the server immediately and then restore our backups? So that everything is in place and users can begin to apply, um. Submit their visa applications on our website. So you test your disaster recovery plan, you must test every aspect of it because. You want to test your failure rate, your recovery rate. Uh. There's also something we called, um, recovery time objective and recovery point objective. With a recovery time objective, like I've mentioned, how long is it going to take us to recover to? A point where we can continue our business operations. And your recovery point objective, if we're going to recover, how far back? Of our recovery can we accept? And would also enable us continue our business operation. That's why it's very important to ensure that you have backups. Because if whatever happens today, you want to be able to go back to what you had yesterday. So it does be twenty-four hours of data loss, but you want to recover to at least ninety-nine point. Something percent of the data that you had yesterday. You don't want to go back to last year's backup. That is so wrong. You would have lost a lot of information, you would have upgraded certain things to. Going back to a backup that is so last year is not acceptable. So you need to encourage your I T team, you need, you also need to provide them the resources that they require to do all of this. Um. Let's see what I have here again. So nobody wants a disaster to occur in the organization, so you need to begin to think as an I T security. Um. Analysts. And then see all of this as, you know, steps you can take to recover from an incident or an event. So is that clear? Do you want me to come up with another example? If my life see your hand up, you can please unmute and. Oh, is that an old hand? Um. Manuela? Okay, so maybe it's an old hand. But, um, thank you, Nikesh, you're a great teacher. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh. So there's a question here from Fisa says, business continue, okay, I guess he's giving his insight. He says, business continuity plan focuses on keeping. Businesses going during an incident, correct, while disaster focuses on restoring data access. And I T infrastructure after an incident. That is very correct. You can see that. You know, they work hand in hand, it sound alike. But then, um, they sort of have different components to it. And, okay, my last is, that's an old hand. Okay, thank you very much. So the next on. Chapter two is the incident response plan. So please, anyone, can you tell me what you think an incident response plan is? You can see that they are all plans. That we need to have in place for. Um. Uh. Business. And putting into mind that businesses vary, their operations vary, and how each. Um. Plan would. Like each plan would be different for each organization. However, it's always important to have in mind that you need to have all of this in place. So that, you know, you don't lose your years of work because of one hacker. Or a malicious user. Uh. Okay, so what do we think? Uh. Oh, you're my, you can ask a question?
Yes, sorry to take you back a bit. I was just reading, um, what, um, I think Fisa wrote. About business continuity and disaster recovery. Okay, so I'm trying to wrap my head around it, getting a bit confused. So business continuity plan focuses on keeping business going during an incident.
Yeah.
So there's, that means an incident. Has happened or is happening.
Okay.
And then disaster recovery focuses on. Restoring data services after an incident. So. Does it mean that, um, during an incident? If business continuity, the business continuity plan works perfectly, you may not need to do disaster recovery. Except something, I don't know, I'm just a bit confused there.
Okay, so, um, let me clarify that. Um. So like I mentioned, businesses are different, business operations are different. If you operate an organization, for example, a bank. Um. That processes millions of data. Um. You can have your business continuity plan. Good, let's say, for example, someone's, um, hacking your, your, your website is under attack. Let's use your mobile app as an example. My app is under an attack. All of the starting users are not able to. Um. Connect. To it. They are not able to transact, you know, I T is running up and down, what's happening, okay, what do we do next? And this is where your business continuity plan comes into place. And you go to your business continuity plan, we have plan A to do this, you know, let's see, restore our backup immediately. Shut, maybe shut down the initial app. To prevent, um, what's this word? To prevent whatever attack is going on from spreading on your network. So you you activate your business continuity plan immediately. Your disaster recovery plan, because you you've initiated your business continuity plan. While maybe that incident is going on because you want to restore service operation. So now your business continuity plan is in place. Most people wait until. Everything, um, dies down to initiate a disaster recovery plan. The reason being that you want to find out the root cause of what happened. Take in mind also that you've restored services to a minimal level. You've activated your business continuity plan. Uh. One second, please. Uh. Apologies for that. Um. So like I was saying, so you have your business, you've activated your business continuity to a, okay, now, after the incident. Your manager is going, what happened? What is the root cause of this incident? Did somebody press anything? Did anybody? You know? What happened? So this is where you begin to identify the root cause of. The incident. You don't activate your disaster recovery plan immediately while it's going on. Yes, you wait until. The incident, you have contained the incident, you're not going to leave your website. Open so an attack and it continues because you have your B C P activated, you contain it. Find out the root cause of the incident. What happened? You identify gaps in your system, you get, um. I T analysts or nutrition testers to find, okay, maybe your code. As a bug, you know, so many things you can identify. And tie to the root cause of this incident. And then by doing this, you identify solutions you can put in place. What you can do to close this gap. And then referring back to P C I D S is if. In the course of identifying the root cause of this incident, or what happened? And you find out that customer data has been exploited. And it's out there and this hacker had access to our server, downloaded the customer file. And put it out on the internet. You're going to be fined. Because you have breached your user privacy. Do you get the concept? Just want to be sure that you're following.
Yes, I am.
Yes, so we need to take, um, all these plans and how they work. Um. Into perspective. If you read more, you understand more. You can also Google it. Um. And get clarity into that. So we'll quickly review the incident response plan. So can anybody please answer? Thank you. Um. Okay, so I will just quickly go through that. Like the name says, it's an incident response plan. Yes, we have our B C P, we have our D R P. Um. Incident response plan mostly is used by. Cybersecurity analyst team or the cybersecurity team, the information security team of an organization. Um. A small company can also have an incident response plan because we all face various, um. Threats to our organization. So the purpose of an incident response plan is used to guide an organization towards its response. To a cybersecurity incident. It contains steps to help teams prepare for. Detect, respond to, and recover from a potential cyber attack. This is. The example of what I had explained in my disaster recovery, uh, plan. Or in this document, okay? Example, we have a malware on five staff's laptop. Um. Do we have security solutions in place first to detect? Because you can't take care of what you don't know. Do we have security solutions in place? Do we have antivirus in place to detect? These activities on, you know, our staff's laptop? Is it reported to a dashboard for analytics where? As an, as a cybersecurity analyst, when I log into the, okay, I can see, okay, A B C has certain malware on their system. Okay, what step do I take? Next, how do I respond? Do I just sit down and say, ah, it's just a, it's just a malware, they have antivirus, they'll be fine, or I don't need to really worry about it. So your incident response plan also, you then begin to categorize the level of incidental attacks. That you're going to fit as an organization. Like I mentioned now, if it's just a malware or. Your document is infected, am I going to prioritize it compared to if my financial website is under attack? I'm going to ask a question now. Financial institution's website or a web application is under attack. And an incident where, um. I have a corrupt file on my laptop, which would you prioritize as a cybersecurity analyst? Which would you prioritize? Uh. Oh, you might even respond, please.
I think the website.
That's correct. Uh, Manila, you can speak, you're clapping, okay? Uh. Yes, you would prioritize, um, a website. Uh. Okay, let me look for another. Incident to discuss, but. Um. Okay, so as a cybersecurity analyst, you. Uh. You received an email or ten people in your organization receives what is. A phishing email. And five people have clicked on it, they submitted their username and password. And they only came to report to you the following day, or you found out yourself as an analyst the following day that. Something funny is going on with this user, they've logged on like fifty times in two hours. And then you also have another incident where, um. One of your security solutions. That you use for analysis. You find out that you're unable to login. Maybe you refresh, you, you know, when you go to a web browser and it says this website is not available, which would you prioritize looking after your security solution? Because you can't login or paying attention to the five users out of the ten. Who clicked on a phishing email and you think maybe their access has been compromised. You can please unmute and answer, anybody? Which would you prioritize?
Can I? Can I try?
Yes, please go on.
Okay, so I would think I would prioritize the compromised system.
I never said the system was compromised. I mean, for the website. I just said that you're unable to login, like, for example, you go to yamud dot com and you say, oh, this site is not available. I didn't say it was compromised.
No, I mean for the other staff, the other, as you said, fifth half clicked on the phishing.
Okay, perfect. That's, that's a good.
That's what I meant.
Okay, nice users, okay. Thank you very much. Anyone have comments, feedback? Do you disagree with us? If yes, why do you disagree? Uh. Okay, Niket is here, don't see any chat. Manila, do you agree or disagree? Yama? Uh. Okay, you say you're, you still with us? Okay, um, so that's correct. I would prioritize five users. In fact, I would prioritize ten users who have. Received a phishing email and five people have clicked on it because. Their access couldn't, their access is now compromised. And five, um, five of them have lost. Access to their account, which is now possibly in the hands of malicious users and are using it to access other resources. In the environment. This, this is all, why also to factor is very important. Ensure you enable to factor authentication to how you assess the resources in your environment. So, over my, you're very correct, would prioritize. Investigating the five users who have had their access compromised. So these are the types of incidents we would discuss. Or detail out in our incident response plan and how we are going to deal with it. That you're going to pick. So for example, the. The phishing, the users who clicked on the phishing link, you need to know who these people are and. Actually check if the other five didn't even click on it. Maybe they clicked on it, but you submit their credentials. You need to get them to reset their passwords immediately. You need to sign them up for a cybersecurity awareness training. Their managers need to be informed of what has happened. Um. Also check the resources, the access in your environment and see if. Any changes are recorded, but when you change their password, obviously, all the access to other resources change. You need to check if maybe they have service, there's something before service account. The other resources, just ensure that you go through these several resources that they access. And look for, you know, anomalies. And there's a thing called the prin- the principle of least privilege. I don't know if some of you have gone through that in the course of your. Chapter one and chapter two, give users access to what they need. Don't give them more than what's needed. If I need to access. A and B, just give me access to A and B. Don't give me access to everything because I work in the organization. This is where most people make mistakes. Um. The I T team, they need to have security solutions in place to be able to monitor what's happening. They need to have, um, reports created for the manager. And as an incident response plan, at the end of an incident, you write a report, you identify your root cause. Um. Lessons learned, things you're going to do better the next time things like this happen. So you take all threats. Into account as it applies to your organization and how you're going to deal with it. Also taking into account. Into how they align with, um, frameworks and standards like we discussed earlier. Um. Okay, I also talked on logs, skipping logs and data retention for restoration. So this is about it for this chapter two. Um. I really, I don't have access to the videos. I just have my notes. Um. Which I've made from the exam outline. So if you have any questions, please let's ask them. And we can move on. Okay, Nika says she didn't get the question about this in later. Okay, Nika. Anybody have any questions? Feel free to ask, you know, whatever comes to your mind. And we will try to answer it clearly. I hope I'm answering this question well, it's me, Tom, learning now. I'm actually learning. When are we having the recording? I will share them. Um. Few hours after the session, just. After I check to ensure that it is already recorded. Okay, um, so moving on. I'll just take you through, uh, what you should have done or what you need to be doing. We all should have received the email, the registration email to the learning platform. We have the Slack channel to ask questions and answer questions. You can also email me if you're able to join the Slack channel. We have a weekly study reviews. We had to adjust the. Uh. Time to give people at least two weeks to study because I think one week was. Um. Too close or too short to do each chapter. So we reviewed that and shared the revised plan with everyone. And then for your exam registration, you should have gotten access to the code. If, I also sent the steps to do that last two weeks. You can send me an email personally if you're unable to do this. I'm willing to jump on a call with you and get you registered. So you need to register on person view, pick a date, identify an exam location. The exam is free. The exam is free. Um. It's been paid for by I S E two, so with that code you get. The exam is free. Um, it's been paid for by I S E two, so with that code you get access to it. Uh, okay, questions, no questions, but if you have any more questions, please ask. Don't forget to follow us on our social media pages at Cyber Ben I C T. And if you haven't, if you have a company, if you're thinking of starting a company. You can employ our services to come review your I T processes, help you prepare your policies. And discuss standards with you. So we call it I T process reengineering. We also call that type of security awareness training. And these are some of the services we offer to you, but the goal for this is for you to pass this exam. So please, let's continue to study. Thanks for the turnout today. Um, I will just give few minutes for any more questions. Um. We will close it out, please. How do I answer this one for down registration? Okay, let me see. Are you applying? Uh, to become one, yes, you would say yes, Nikia, you want to be an I S E two associate. As well. Um, so Obi, I know you've not um gone through some of the resources, so please try to do that. And email me or. I see you joined the Slack channel, was that your attire?
Yeah, I did.
All right, so you can drop your questions there and we would, you know. Discuss further. So we're meeting in two weeks' time. Our next meeting date is. Twenty eighth of May, so since we've done module one and two, we're going straight into modules, chapter three. Which is on the twentieth of May. So at the same time, I would send the meeting link before, before we meet. So thank you all very much, thanks for joining. Uh, we're fifteen minutes ahead of time, although we said it's before. Thank you so much, thank you. Um, okay, uh, let's see if. If it's direct. Uh, let me see, one second. Yes, you would pick I S E to direct. So primary language, English, secondary language, if your secondary language is there. Educational training program is I S E to direct. Are you applying to become an associate? Yes. And what you would pick. I would advise everyone to please go through the casing, um, exam registration, just get an idea of available dates. Because they're getting all booked out. Um, you just want to get something soon. You can reschedule your exam, but you need to do that at least twenty four hours before. The actual exam day, or thirty forty eight hours, I would need to reconfirm. So just pick a date and or have an idea of what's available. And also set goals, timelines for your study. That helps. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Visayo, Nikia, Obi, Manuela. I will stop recording now.